Mr. Bolson, welcome. And the floor is yours.
Thank you for having me. My name is Craig Bolson. I live in Trowshue. So I'm not really, um, what do you call it? Directly involved with carbon and rocky. Um, but I want to speak to a couple of things. County councillors, you guys are voted in and by the citizens of county. Um, so it's your job to hear them out and do their bidding. You have the power. We as a county say no. You as a council say no. Well, in connection, we heard your fantasy spiel and your vassal big work. Um, growing up on a farm, I did a lot of rock picking. For three months after seeding, every year that was time to do rock picking, because rocks wreck machinery named the combines. Um, you can pick the same field. I worked on the one farm for eight years. I picked the same field for eight years for three months straight, and rocks keep coming up. You can't say that garbage doesn't come up. Freeze and thaw is a unique thing to Alberta and this county, and things move in freeze and thaw. Garbage rises. I've seen it on other places. I would say that the county has united on this, and we would appreciate the county having our back and saying, not in our land, not in our backyard, taste numbers else. Thank you.
Uh, the next speaker is Karine Tates. She will be followed by Jason Weston. So Jason, if you would please come forward, that would be appreciated. And Ms. Tates, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Hi, I want to thank everybody from our community who came today to help represent the opposition here and for your councillors, for your awesome questions that you asked, as were very insightful. So I'm Karine Tates, and I'm two miles downwind from the proposed site that this project would negatively affect our quality of life. Two miles away is not very far, and from all points of our property, this landfill would be in our direct view. I'm opposed to any company or person trying to take massive amounts of garbage from private contracts and using our county to dispose of it. Last time I checked, it was still common courtesy not to throw your trash in someone else's backyard. I'm writing this from the perspective of a country girl, a mother, and a wife of a small but growing cow calf operation on a centennial farm. Choosing to live rural was just that, it was a choice and a way of life. A lot of people drive by and think there's nothing out here. In fact, that's probably why they picked it. But actually, it's everything that we need and that we want, and it's an integral part of agriculture. We choose this life, and my hope is that this area will continue to serve my family as it has in the past 100 years, and my family, the next generations to come, and not be taken over by urban problems forcing my kids to grow up near a massive landfill. We always see urban living continuing to impede on our rural way of life. For a company to tear up 100 acres plus of crop and natural pasture for a landfill and take control of 300 acres more, also private contractors can make a pile of money and wipe their hands clean of their garbage. I understand it's not black and white. You see the extra money in our county and probably have lots of plans for it already. But essentially, you are taking from us regardless of the consequences and giving it to another for perks. This is our quality of life. The quality of life for my family, for my young kids, and other families in the area. And this is not an area facility that will really bring a lot of benefit or amenity to us and our neighbors. It's not that we're against change or progress, but this doesn't feel like progress, it feels more like selling out. And saying that their way of life, and sorry, that saying that our way of life is less important than theirs, and that your rural members are less important than their agendas. And so yet again, we would be forced to take the brunt of all the peaceful parts of urban life, and we should not be forced to shoulder the consequences of other areas unrestricted growth. My day-to-day will be affected for as long as this landfill is here, and that of my kids. We'll hear the constant sounds of heavy machinery, backup eeping and traffic. The sky will be filled with dust, steam from rotting garbage, and seagulls, and now falcons, who will chase away our beautiful local kingbirds, mountain bluebirds, and pheasants. In winter, the steam from the moisture heat and garbage will create a cloud that will completely take over the north. Chain links, garbage, lights, and concrete buildings will fill our skyline from our deck instead of the patchwork quilt of canola grains and native pasture. My kids will come in from outside smelling like rotting garbage instead of a prairie wind. In fact, every day will constantly be assaulted by the smells and decay and pollution, and our many hours spent outside with the kids could drastically shorten from living downwind from here. The coulee system we are on is known for its gusty conditions. Um, and I don't think even a chain link fence will keep that dirt and garbage where it should be. When we sit on our deck, that is what we will see. When I'm playing with my boys in our sand pit, that will be my new backdrop. All the pictures of my growing family in our yard will have a backdrop of garbage piles and garbage strewn throughout our yard. The stars, the northern lights, all of those will be unseen because this new section will be lit up like a small city. Scavengers will also displace our small cow herd and could impact our pets and livestock and children. It's our privacy, our view, our peace, our seclusion, and our way of life. We chose to live out in the middle of nowhere for all of these reasons and more. And please don't bring urban living and the problems that come with it into our backyard. If we wanted to live with constant traffic, lights, noise, and people, we would move to a city. But we do not want that, so do not force that on our children. Thank you.
Uh, the next speaker is Jason Weston, and following him will be Doug McKenzie. So Doug, if you would please come forward. So Jason, the floor is yours.
Thanks.
Please go ahead.
Thanks for the opportunity to speak. My name is Jason Weston, and I am from Swallow. And it's been nice to see some of the farm people around my area just coming up to this meeting. So I've heard a lot today. I just learned a lot about what we can expect from that dump when it comes. The lights, I didn't even think of that. So anyways, I'll try to cut through this as quick as I can. People have pretty much mentioned everything I wanted to talk about. But I just wanted to say I'm a construction worker, and, uh, and I'd like to be here for some of the construction workers that couldn't be here today. If you notice, this meeting is in the middle of a sunny spring day when most farmers are usually busy this time. And you can see I'm probably the only construction worker here that could sneak away from work today. I'd probably get fired. Anyways, uh, the real thing I'd like to talk to you today about is the biohazard. I mean, it is obviously the worst thing that can come from this idea that somebody came up with. Uh, bringing the, let me just inject COVID into a dump during, uh, a time when we have farms and livestock all over this place. I think if this dump was running and the thing came along in 2020, the COVID panic, we would be livid. Those birds would be flying out of the dump, landing in Swallow, be landing on the farms, landing in our, with our families. I mean, this is just conjecture, but I think that it's something we've got to really think about. I'm going to move on. I think we all know that that's pretty ugly. The second thing I'd like to address is how this development will consume all of our resources for little financial gain. Uh, litigation and complaints will be our lives. There will be complaints, then litigation, then compensation, over and over. Your guys' lives will be consumed with the dump. Complaints about the dump, what's happening with the dump, what's happening with the dump today. Just like today, it's consumed with the dump. All of us got something else to do. You guys should be spending your time on concerns with the county not to do with the dump. It's going to be dumped all the time. The last thing I'd like to say is I am a construction worker, and I have seen every type of liner or plastic. They fail, they fail for sure, all the time. I've never seen them not. Um, so it's a fail in every way. When you get to the environmental aspect of it, like what's it going to do to the environment? I think it's moot. I don't even think we need to go that far. We developed these bylaws years ago to protect our investment, my investment, our farm's investment, so that people can't come in here and just do this exact thing. So for me, it's moot. We're just going through the motions. This is our equash. Um, if somehow this goes through, I would have to say that you're not representing us. Because this isn't represented, this is what we want. I guess I'll do my best.
Thank you, Jason. Appreciate your comments and your presence here today. The next speaker on our list is Mr. Doug McKenzie, and he'll be followed by Angel Saatchuk. So Angel, if you could please come to the front so you're prepared when Mr. McKenzie's done. And Mr. McKenzie, the floor is yours.
Thank you. My name is Doug McKenzie. We have found land within about five to six kilometers of the site. One of the things that I found by reading the report, and I had to change my talk because there's so many good points came up I had already, but one of the things I read, it's old technology, really old technology. And 20 acre pads or cells and 15 to 25 year site gives me kind of heartburn of what will happen in the future. Well, one of the things I don't think has been brought up here today is in this report, they give a good idea of how they're going to handle the system. Venting. In the venting, they're either going to vent the gases, methane, CO2, and all the other gases, or they're going to fire them. And I remember fire, I don't know from my limited knowledge, if that is similar to oil, gas fire it or not. But to me, that's a big negative thing. In the report, they say they're not going to go with a collection system. So I think our tenants should be wide open on it. If they're going to not go to a collection system, and one of the things that hasn't come up today is fire. I don't know if any of the councillors remember the fire in Carbon about 10 or 12 years ago. I can still remember a guy standing beside a fellow. His son grabbed the tractor in December and tried to make a plow, get some of the grass down. The young boy almost went in the fire, and I can still remember him trying to outrun the fire. And I don't believe, unless I'm mistaken, the county doesn't have equipment available to handle a fire if it gets away. If a county's interested, some ranchers and farmers in DC who ran into a fire had a, did a South movie called The Death of a Valley, or The Death of an Area. And it'd be very wise to take a look at that if you could, because what would happen? At the Carbon Fire, we had a hell of a problem. I almost said the wrong words. So we're there, and from bringing in, getting an organic matter back in the soil, which was a real problem and expansive. And boy, if you want to fight with insurance company, go ahead. Boy, that's pretty tough when there's a fire. Because I don't know how to handle a farm's farm homes. One of the other things I thought one of the councillors brought up, which was a very, very wise comment. And the comment was, I think all of us in the room have experienced oil companies, pipeline companies, and not paying their taxes, and I think Neale is probably no exception. The companies are sold to a smaller company, and all the goodwill of the older company disappears overnight. And we're into a heck of a fight. I think we've probably had a meeting in this room 15 years ago. I'm trying to tell my age because of the fact our company that wasn't paid. And I think that we have to be very cautious as a council to, that you don't find in the same circumstances and run into problems where you have a tremendous bird or ash bird or whatever if they sell the company and another one moves on. So I'm hoping that the council will throw out the application and think of what's fair, sound, and reasonable, and not do a short-term game for a long-term pain of the citizens of Neale. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McKenzie. Our next speaker is Angel Saatchuk, and she'll be followed by Ken Ward. So Mr. Ward, if you would please come forward so you're ready. And Ms. Saatchuk, the floor is yours.
Hi, thank you. I'm Angel Slanta. I live on Grayne Road, and I was two miles straight east of the site. I did submit a letter. I am against this for all the reasons that everybody else has already stated. My family and I moved there for the peace and quiet. 28 years ago, we moved from Calgary to get away from noise, traffic, and pollution. If I wanted to live next to a dump, I could have moved next to one in Calgary. That is not why I intended to move here. We went to the meeting at Waste Management. My husband was with me. He would have come today except for he had to work where most people are today. Unfortunately, he could not get off. Um, I was, my questions were not answered with Waste Management. I asked about contamination. We have a well at our site, and that's where our water source is. They could not guarantee that there would not be reaching contamination. They just said there would be monitoring. By monitoring it, that does not answer my question. But then it could be too late. My well, the water we drink, my children, my grandchildren, my family, friends, it could be too late. The water could be contaminated. What will they give? There is no answer. They just monitor well. That doesn't answer. The water, there is a creek on the site that they're proposing. That creek feeds into Neale Creek, goes into Red Deer. Water, the Red Deer River, that affects everybody. That is the main water source, as you guys know. The smell, well, they put chemicals on it. That can lead to also the chemicals. While you can put perfume on garbage, it still stinks. When does garbage smell? The noise. I moved there for peace and quiet. There will be noise. Like I said on my deck, for the peace and quiet, I will still hear that annoying noise away. Digital traffic. Well, someone said that there's only one house on that road. We all use, all our neighbors, myself included, we use 29th. That is a road source for us. So that will affect us. We ride our bikes around there all the time, my husband and I. So that will affect us. And I did ask about, he said that there will be employment sources. That's only a few people. And he said that there are carnies from them. Um, that vocals don't like to get that kind of work, so they bring in outside foreign workers or that. Well, that doesn't help bring us any value. I also felt that we were all blindsided. It was kind of hush-hush, five, 10 miles away. Nobody talked to us about it. We found out from the neighbors just over a week ago. So when it's brought up like that, we're blindsided, that's a red flag. So I did appreciate that at home. When you rezone agriculture, that's prime farmland. A lot of you are agricultural backgrounds. I really hope that you don't let this go. I appreciate all of you guys and the work you've made that you all put into Neale County. But I think, help us keep our trust in you. You are our voice. Thank you.
Next speaker on the floor for making her presentation, and we're going to speak to noise, smell, possible contamination of the nearby creek. If you've submitted that already in a letter, I would appreciate it if you'd help us in the process to allow everybody who needs to speak to speak by just saying you agree with things that have been previously submitted, which relate to noise, smell, water contamination, and so on. Mr. Ward, you are our next speaker, and I apologize in advance to the person who's following you, whose name I believe is Farah, last name, and I'm not even going to try your first name. And I apologize in advance for that. So, Mr. Ward, the floor is yours. And Mr. Farah, if you'd come forward and be prepared to make your presentation. Mr. Ward.
My name is Ken Ward. I live a mile and a half west of the site. And also, I've got land a half a mile northwest of the site. And we've had trash on our land for a number of years. We've got a feedlot beside us, and it's agriculture, so I don't mind it. We do pick up. Of course, everybody knows what a feedlot is like. You've got a lot of plastic, and it blows. I mean, we have got winds out there so bad that it just rips those plastic all apart. You have no choice. I've had silage pits, and it rips it off my place too. So I haven't got much choice. And what people are talking about, I agree with everything. And I was going to tell you about that coulee too, but you guys are on the Red Deer River. Is your watering system for trios, Trowshue, Actlea, Bysiker, Arakana, and also understand Drumhaw. So if you're going to have a problem, you're going to have a serious problem. Because I don't think Drumhaw is going to stick around and say, hey, we're going to sue the heck out of you because it's your pumps and you're supplying the water to us. So I don't know what's going to happen there. But the garbage system, garbage problem, we're always going to have. Because we have got high winds. Back now it's coming up. See the wave here the other day, and a dirty gun throwing off the road. So I'm hoping you guys are going to do the right things. I haven't got, I can't say anymore than what anybody else is telling me. All I can say is I hope you do the right things and thank you for being the councillor.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Following, is it Farah? Okay, thank you. So following you will be Clinton Elliott. So, Mr. Elliott, if you would please come forward so that you're ready for your presentation. And Mr. Farah, as soon as you're ready, you go ahead.
Perfect. I'm Rago Farah, and I live in the Grayne J area. My family and I moved to Neale County a few months ago, and I have to admit, I do not know the ins and outs of how the council works. What I do know is effective management, representation, and taking hard decisions. You have 1,300 pages of letters on why this landfill in Neale County is completely ludicrous and how this does not align in any shape or form with the municipal development plan. Waste Connections seems to have taken an interesting approach, treating the residents of Neale with utter disdain, no meaningful public engagement, and pushing through this direct-controlled redesignation as not a big deal, which will severely limit the ability of the public to oppose it and give councils zero oversight. One of my fellow residents summarized the way Waste Connections is dealing with us, and I'll quote. "I attended the open house last evening. Upon entry, we were given an open house bingo card that could go to each display, mark it off, to return said card to be put in for a door prize. The attendees were not children playing a game and should not be treated this way. These people are concerned about the enjoyment of their land and their livelihoods. I also found it interesting that the company staff did not take it upon themselves to know where or to provide a recycle bin for the water." Interesting? Interesting when one of the mandates on advertising is recycle. As a result, I do have to question the integrity of Waste Connections can. End quote. We've heard a lot about Waste Connections saying, trust us. One of the things they talked about was they have this, we have what you heard. And I've just gone onto their website, and what comes up is a one-read link with Ivan Osorio, and there's nothing there, but we should trust him. And then you have Dan, who's sniggering and rolling his eyes when people's impassioned pleas. Part of the council that I find interesting is the fact that the head councillor is called Reeve. I do wonder if with the public hearing being scheduled at 10:00 AM on Tuesday during seeding season, if we are in a feudal system. I did look up the policies, and it can be scheduled at any time. Unlike the Reeves of the past that worked for the Lords and who not only served as a go-between, whose job was to make people feel heard and not actually to hear from them or represent their interests. Neale County is not a thiefted. The Reeve is not a king. Today, the councillors are elected by the residents to represent their interests and are paid well to do so. Overwhelmingly, the residents oppose this landfill. If you councillors bypass this law, it does beg the question, why are you doing this? Which you will need to answer. Passing this law, in my opinion, is a complete abdication of responsibility by you as councillors. If you're thinking of legacy as councillors and what you want to be known for, make no mistake the significance of this vote. This is a defining moment, and it will be remembered for generations to come if you do approve the redesignation of the dump. Fina King, Debbie Penner, Cherry Woodstock, Carrie Forbes. Madam, thank you for your questions, which Waste Connection didn't answer a single one of them. Laura Lee Mitchell Cunningham, Wade Christie, and Karen King. If you approve the rezoning, you will be known forever as the councillors that took away prime agricultural land, destroyed the children's future, and transformed Neale County into a dump. As a final thought, as you won the redesignation, you have the power to put a stop to this. Saying you don't is a lie. If you don't represent the interests of the people that have elected you and pay your generous salaries by declining this redesignation, I wonder about the next election. Whose interests are you representing? And if you do want in favor of this redesignation, I really do wonder, why would you do that? With great power and great responsibility, use it wisely. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farah. Um, Mr. Elliott, Clinton, you're up next. And following you, you will be Mr. Colton Tate. So Colton, if you would please come to the front. And, uh, Mr. Elliott, the floor is yours.
Clinton Elliott. I have submitted a letter. I live approximately one mile north of the site, have all my life. I have property on the east side, which is the coulee everyone is speaking about. I have three quarters of land that that coulee runs through, so a mile and a half is going through my land. Everything to the south and west drains down that coulee eventually comes through my place. I don't care if it's leachage, wind, or garbage, surface liquid. They just admitted that a liner is not 100% leak-proof, and I think they mentioned 12 inches of liquid. Okay, over like 20 acres, maybe 100 acres eventually. If that starts leaking, ends up in my coulee. What do I do? I mentioned what everybody else has said about heading up and throwing out the water plant. So my question, what is the liability? Do they have a bond? Is there a fund? Is there insurance? What's the county's liability at some point? Because this will go sideways, I think. And then later on, are the public going to be able to hold garbage to the dump? Because if they are, the commercial vehicles will have a designated route. But anybody else from the north end of the county is going to be taking other routes, I suspect, shorter routes. And I've seen it west of Arakna where I run, on the way to that landfill. They do not target properly. And your ditches are full of stuff that's blown off. They drive slower, it still blows up because it's not contained properly. Other than that, everybody else is pretty much covered by concerns. So thank you very much for your time.
Our next speaker will be Mr. Colton Tate, and following him is Jill White. So Jill, if you would please come forward. And then, uh, Mr. Tate, Colton, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I'm Colton Tate. I live on the corner of 24 and 242, so I'm two miles directly south of the proposed site. I don't want to touch on it too much, because other people have, but our direct view is going to be directly at this landfill. To the south of that, which I noticed there was no pictures taken in the presentation, to the south. To the south is a gradual incline. So everything south of Mr. Colton's site looks directly down at the landfill. So it'll be hidden in plain sight. Yeah, it's hidden in plain sight to the north or to the west. But other than that, we're looking right at it. A couple of concerns I have are, there's a healthy mule population around the coulee of these Waste Connections that you talk to protecting the animals and ecosystems and things of that nature. Well, how do you protect something when you build a 536 acre zone? That's going to drive the deer away. Well, now this healthy deer population is going to conglomerate in farms, in neighbors, pastures. It's going to conglomerate in their hay, in their hay stands. It's going to be in their feed yards, depleting feeding for their animals. The other thing I was concerned about was, I would consider it on the edge of a riparian area. And I believe the county has a strong stance on protecting riparian areas that will I believe it's your ABS program is what you have started. So that's to protect waterways and riparian areas from outside pollutants. Well, how can you protect a riparian area without any kind of guarantee? These guys talk with how they're going to support it, how they're going to protect it. But there is no guarantee for people. And once this becomes a direct control, who are they accountable to? Once it's direct control, it's other people's hands. They're no longer accountable to us. They're no longer accountable to you. They have to follow your guidelines. But there's no real consequence from those of us that are negatively affected by this. And I also went to the open house. And the most alarming thing to me about going to this open house was a lack of clear communication. Same as what I believe you guys saw here today. The councillors had many good questions. And I didn't hear one straight answer. No yes or no, no exact number, just walking around with questions, giving you the answers that you want to hear without actually giving you an answer. I found this to be the same at the open house, where there was talk of, this project had started a year before the open house, is when the drilling began, to take the core samples. Well, in a year's time, would it not seem relevant to inform some of the residents of the area? And I understand that you guys set a one-mile radius for the notification by the company. Well, in a practice of due diligence, which is one of the words that was quoted around that date, was that a year ago started the due diligence process. Well, to me, and anybody who's been in oil, gas, or anything of that nature, due diligence is going above and beyond the bare minimum. So why would a company acting in good faith and in due diligence only do the bare minimum that they're absolutely required to do by the county? To me, that shows that not only is their community involvement promises going to be the bare minimum, but the work that progresses, everything to do with the dump is going to be the bare minimum required. They're not doing anything wrong. They're just doing only what is required. And this is one of the biggest concerns to me, is it seems like a real lack of good faith that a company would do only the bare minimum. If you look at a county map, you can see that the area proposed, there's about two residents in that one-mile radius. One of them is probably gaining financially from it. So if you see that, why would you not take a bigger demographic? If you're acting in good faith, to propose maybe two miles, maybe three miles, get a bigger demographic where you're looking at 10 households that are going to be negatively affected rather than the one and one that's gaining financially from this. So I guess I'll leave it with that. And my biggest concern is the lack of transparency through questioning and fear that, once this is indirect control, there is no true accountability to the people, the people that are affected by it, the people that have lived with this for the rest of their lives. If this is, if this bylaw is amended, that pretty much puts an end to our concern about it. And it'll go on daily business as if we ever existed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tate. The next speaker to be speaking is Jill White. And she will be followed by Karen Metzger. So Karen, if you would please, you can come to the front of the room. And Ms. White, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, council, guests from Waste Connections. Thank you for being here to share information and hear us out today. Hello also to my valued neighbors and friends and concerned stakeholders who are here. My name is Jill White. I'm the daughter of Alan Marka Mouchka. And I grew up about four miles from the proposed site. And my husband and I have developed and part-time live on an acreage about two and a half miles further west from there. I did not submit anything in writing, my apologies on behalf of me and my family. My dad is very ill and has been in hospital since April 5th. But it was very important to him and to the rest of us that we be represented in opposition of this plan. So I'm speaking on behalf of three generations of Mouchkas, as well as my own family, my husband Scott and two daughters. We do support economic growth and development for the county, absolutely. We also do understand the need for waste management infrastructure, but preferably for our own county only and ideally owned and managed by residents of our own county. In the Waste Connections proposal, I'm very concerned about the absolute language used. Like, we are developing, on page one, it states Waste Connections of Canada is developing an integrated waste management facility in the Neill County. And that's concerning, since we just heard about that for the first time a few weeks ago. And I know other people have said that. On page three, though, it does say, as part of site selection rationale, that the following factors were considered in the selection process. A willing host. Neill County's strategic plan supports continued economic development. That's a good goal. And one of its goals is to ensure Neill County is prepared for waste management needs. It's curious that Neill County is all of us, but how we are listed as a willing host without any of us knowing anything about it? I do find it also interesting that in the 2022 to 2025 strategic plan, waste management is considered as a goal. But as John Ware mentioned, that wasn't noted as a concern at the fall engagement meetings. And so, I'm just, we are a little bit curious as to how long this has been in the works. And so, and definitely, preparing a 97-page corporate report like this takes time and energy and a whole lot of money. And so, it just, it doesn't sit well with us. And so they noted that Neill County is a willing host. I don't feel that the sentiment in this room is very willing. Also, in talking about recycling and the importance of that, I'd like to, I don't know if any of you have seen the Echo Recycling and Energy Corporation's facility near Quarry Park in Calgary. But I drove past it the other day and you can see it from Glenmore Trail. It is a huge mountain of what looks like garbage. But this would be the cleanest of materials that would be brought to this facility because those are technically recycling materials. That mountain has grown and grown, which I see something similar, yet green colored, on the later pages of Waste Connections report. That is not how it looks in practice on a day-to-day basis. So, the future value guarantee as well. 10 years in the future where guaranteed assessed value of the pre-landfill development. Who in this room would like to sell their property for the value that it was 10 years ago? Nobody. So I don't think that that's a very safe guarantee for us. Deeply concerned about the money push, charitable giving. I don't really feel that we need it. And our youth that spoke today are good proof that 4H is doing great without added charitable money. So thank you all for that. The, there's a goal in the report, that, your report, that says we want to attract new citizens and retain existing residents in our county. I think this will be challenging on pretty well everything in your strategic plan. Thank you very much. We trust you, we value you. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ms. Karen Metzger. And following her will be Rosalie Lambly. And I don't really have to call her to the front since she's already here. Ms. Metzger, go ahead.
Dear councillors, thank you for listening to us this afternoon. My name is Karen Metzger. Our family has farmland just over a mile from this proposed site of the landfill. And we live six miles west. Both my husband and I have grown up and raised a family in this area all of our lives. Besides climate, soils, agriculture's major limitation. Only 3.2% of our farmland, of our land area can be used to grow crops in Canada. 4.2% as pasture land. For every million people we add to Canada's population, we are losing nearly 131,000 acres of prime farmland near our urban areas. Agricultural lands are one of our most vital resources as Canadians. Good agricultural land should not be destroyed to make way for a landfill. Farmland is the only non-depleting production asset and they're not making any more. The demand for nutritious food grows each day with Canada's growing population. The land just isn't a resource. It's the place we live, it's where we're rooted. It's our neighborhood where third and fourth generation families have farmed and raised families. My community and I have taken great pride in the social and economic contributions of these families throughout the years. To now place a landfill in the heart of this community is an incredible hindrance to our way of life, as well as a health risk to these residences and their livestock. We already have enough stress with drought on our water resources in this county. We don't need the stress of potential contamination. Our country is full, or our county is full of innovative people. Why don't we look for other ways to manage waste, such as places in Europe where they are using incineration to create energy, instead of using up our farmland to become a dumping ground for Calgary and other areas of Alberta? To destroy our land with a landfill is to completely lower our standards in this county. It is disheartening if that's all we can come up with to generate more tax revenue. We are better than this. Rezoning this farmland is a massive decision that could have some very serious consequences to the people of this county. A decision that cannot be reversed once the land transaction has gone through. Having direct control on this land and having the county act as the middleman between the local people and Waste Connections is going to be quite an undertaking if this goes through. As the landfill in Neill will just be a small little dot on the map for this $43 billion US company. If you happen to Google Waste Connections more locally, within the Calgary region, the reviews are quite alarming and don't instill confidence. Here are just a couple of reviews out of multiple negative ones regarding contracts with their customers. I strongly advise anyone considering doing business with Waste Connections to exercise caution and scrutinize every word in their contracts. This company's tactics can be challenging to navigate and their services are far from the hassle-free garbage and recycling pickup they promised. Proceed with care if you value your time, money, and sanity. I deal with garbage companies across the country and this has been the most difficult, uncooperative company to deal with. Your business practices are shady and unethical. Not to mention a review I saw with their loads not being secured and having garbage being blown all over Stony Trail. In addition, there are multiple comments how they are impossible to get hold of and more reviews about overflowing garbage bins that didn't get picked up on time. Is this the kind of, is this the kind of unreliable company you would like to welcome to Neill County? If they don't have good reviews within the city of Calgary with their recycling and garbage bin contracts, how can we possibly trust them in our county with owning, constructing, and operating this massive 530-acre landfill beside our homes? Councillors, put your feet in the shoes of these local residents and ask yourself if you'd like to have a company like this with the Canadian headquarters based out of Toronto in your backyard. The resilience of this community coming together at such a hectic time of year is truly a testament of the great pride my neighbors take upon saving their land, the air they breathe, and the fresh water from our wells and runoff in our creeks that we often take for granted. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Rosalie Lambly, Ms. Lambly. And following her is Richard Clark. I'm also, just before Ms. Lambly goes ahead, is to let you know that we have this room till 3. So if you're going to come up and you're going to repeat information that's already been covered, please say I am very much in support of what previously has been submitted. And then that way we can facilitate everyone who wants to speak, speaking. Ms. Lambly, you're up next, and please go ahead.
Thank you, Chief King. I am Rosalie Lambly. And I live on our old homestead, which has been there more than 120 years, in the valley of the Three Hills Creek, where Highway 21 intersects our property. It totally cuts us off. And we see the traffic that comes with the big trucks and bumps at the bridge that needs to be replaced. And in the culvert, where a horrible bump is because of a culvert underneath the highway, which, to which these trucks would only add to the problem. More garbage trucks on Highway 21 with this landfill is not a good future for us. The impact of these extreme weather events in our area are incredible. Councillor Christie spoke to the water events that come with the microbursts and the dust and the soil that changes. This microburst has filled our valley, the last one, 2004, from hillside to hillside. They come and, yeah, they're gone within a half a day, that water. But that water would take out the roads, the bridges, and the dust. It would overwhelm the ponds of a landfill. And in turn, that stuff would be down the watershed area of the Neill Creek into the Red Deer and into the Saskatchewan, South Saskatchewan River system. And we have hail and we have snow events and long periods of cold water. And our family album since 1910 has recorded this with pictures, black and white pictures of when these massive amounts of moisture have come down. So it's not, I'm not manufacturing it, it's happened. So the thing that bothers us, too, is that the emergency response to something like this would certainly be delayed because these events take out the roads. So I applaud all, many of the reasons that the speakers before me have given you all to turn down this change. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barrett. Again, I'm just going to say, we have 14 people who wish to speak. We have about an hour left in the room. If you do the math, five minutes times 14, it doesn't work. So if you are going to address an issue somebody else has already addressed, please just refer to the fact that it's been addressed previously. And Mr. Clark, Richard Clark, you're next. And then following you is Dwayne McGarty. And so, Dwayne, if you would come forward, please. And Mr. Clark, the floor is yours.
Thank you for hearing me. Most of, most everybody's covered everything that I want to say. So if it's possible, I'd like to give my five minutes to the lawyer who was speaking earlier, who ran short of time. He's got some information that we all should hear. And I think that would be important information for us all to have. In the meantime, thank you very much as leaders here for gathering everybody together. That's a sign of true leadership, to gather everybody under the wing. I come down for horse by horse, you can. But the letters you received and the turnout today, man, you guys have done a great job of bringing us all together. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Any additional speakers or additional opportunity will be dependent on time. So, Mr. McGarty, you're next. Following him is Mike Bauer. So, Mr. Bauer, if you would please come forward. And Mr. McGarty, the floor is yours, please.
I agree with most of the stuff that's been said against the proposal. People have mentioned seagulls and the avian flu. I just wanted to add to that. The company involved in the development says they have employed falcons to try and chase away or mitigate bird life. If you've been to a large dump in the area, and this is regulatory to chase, mitigate the birds, seagulls, it works, but not that well. There's flocks, there's swarms. I am not only concerned with the seagulls themselves, I'm concerned with the crows. Many, many, many crows, if you've been to a dump, a large dump. And I'm just going to add, the avian flu. A seagull is a protected bird in Canada. And explains why they can't just call the birds to chase them away. So they try and use natural means. The avian flu is just the The avian flu is just the least of the problems with the birds. I have an article here that explains that they also spread salmonella, something called Camplobacter, protozoa such as Cryptosporidium jardia, not just on beaches but throughout towns and cities. The bacteria fungal agents and ectoparasites found in gull droppings can cause histoplasmosis, encephalitis, meningitis, toxoplasmosis, and a host of other unpleasant diseases. I don't know where the gulls nest, but they're known to be aggressive when they're nesting with other life around. They have a high content of uric acid in the bird droppings, crows eat the buildings. I'm gonna leave that for now. The crows themselves, I'm concerned, one of the things, oh, sorry, I didn't say... Dwayne McGarty, 235050 Township Road, 290, so we are directly east, first house east of Highway 21. We received no communications regarding from the company regarding this development. We found out from lady at the post office. So we haven't been to any of the open houses or anything. We were unaware, and it wasn't communicated with the company, which is kind of interesting. A comment I have on the acceleration of deceleration lane, because we are the first house on the east side of Highway 21 where these lanes will be, I asked the council and everyone to consider what a large diesel engine sounds like when it's just at cruising speed versus when it's slowing down and at full throttle speeding up again. We're probably in line to hear that quite well. I don't know how far we are from the development itself, but like I say, we are on the same road and we're right on Highway 21, about 500 metres. The last part I'll do with my time is just to say that we moved recently from the city, about three years ago, with my wife, and I have a development with a late son. I dad's autism, and he's sensitive to noise particularly. And part of moving out of the city was just to get away from constant noise, people too close, no privacy. I like to look to the nice sky, it's hard to see any stars anymore in Calgary. So it was great moving out here. And my wife has commented more than once that when they're driving home, that she finds herself getting happy and smiling. So I think that's it.
Mr. Mike Bauer is our next speaker, and following you is Mr. Gary Torium. And so, Mr. Torium, if you would come to the front, so that you are prepared to speak when your time comes. So, Mr. Bauer, the floor is yours, please go ahead.
Good afternoon, council, and everybody else in attendance. My name is Michael Bauer, I live up near Taurington, southeast 363226. I did not submit a letter, I missed the deadline, I was busy that day. Just, I wanted to reiterate about the fires as well. I know that's not really my case, but I just did a quick research, and there was 300 waste facility fires in 2022. And I don't know what the cost of mitigating one of those fires would be, but it could be huge in like in 20 years when these things get pretty big, right? I think that could be a pretty big deal. But I do like what everybody else said, it was awesome, and if you make the right choice, I'll give somebody else one.
The next speaker is Mr. Torium, Gary Torium, so if you'd come forward, please. Following him is Viv Hannah, so Viv, if you would please come forward. And Mr. Torium, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and members of the council. My name is Gary Torium, and I live at 2446B Township Road 284 in Neill County, my nailing address is P Box 520 in Carbon. Most of the points that I wanted to make have been covered, but one I wanted to bring to your attention. Winston Churchill made a statement about truth, he said, "Truth is incontrovertible. Malice may attack it, ignorance may deride it, but in the end, there it is." And the truth is, and what troubles me, is that there's a false narrative that has been advanced, particularly by Waste Connections and maybe their agents, township planning and design. And that false narrative is that today's proceedings are really incidental, and they're not that material, and the real issue is that this council and this community will have plenty of opportunity in the future to comment on the environmental processes associated with this waste facility, better known as a garbage dump. And the reality is that if you pass this zoning ordinance today, you have forfeited all future opportunities to object to this plan. And the reason is this: if you go ahead and change the zoning, Waste Connection buys the property and now becomes a property owner in Neill County, and they will own property that has been zoned for a garbage dump. They will have a permitted use in their pocket, and they will need no further approvals from you all. You will join the rest of us as spectators watching them. Somebody mentioned a $43 billion company, that's about $55 billion Canadian, going through the process of getting the provincial environmental approvals and other meeting other statute charter requirements in order to legitimize the development of the garbage dump. So if you don't take advantage of the opportunity you have today and vote this amendment down, you have brought to Neill County a garbage dump. That's a tremendous legacy to have, and I would think it would be troubling. And I'm calling on you, while you still have time and have the opportunity, to decline this application and protect these people to whom you have a fiduciary responsibility. You have no fiduciary responsibility to Waste Connections, but you do represent these people, all of whom came out today to say we're in opposition. When that lady very brilliantly said one of the criteria for Waste Connections was having a willing host, such as Neill County, I am asking you today, if you look at the seven councillors versus the 200 or 300 people that showed up today in opposition, what part of Neill County were they going to to have a willing host? It certainly wasn't these folks, and there were only three people that spoke in favor of this project today. Nobody on your own information sent a letter of opposition. You had about 340 letters in opposition from people like myself, and I'm not reiterating what I put in the letter. But I'm just saying, you today have an opportunity to turn this zoning down and retain control of the property to let it remain agriculture without forfeiting your rights under this false narrative. But this is no big deal, it's just the first step in a long process. This is the process. You grant them zoning, you're history, so are we. Thank you.
The next speaker on the list is Viv Hannah, so Viv, if you would come forward, please. The person following, the name I have is Jay Landy, maybe? I can't read what's written here, but I'm sure you know who you are. So, Ms. Hannah, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. A lot of very concerning issues have been... This just comes from the heart, I'm sorry. A lot of very concerning issues have been going on in Neill County currently, and that are still ongoing, that need to be looked after. Just to name them off, the wind turbines, the extreme feedlot water issues, the landfill and the water problems for the landowners adjacent to these facilities. We as residents of this county need to stand up for each other on all the issues that are at hand. If you wouldn't want it in your backyard, and it doesn't directly affect you, then stand up for the person who may not have the choice and will have it in your backyard. My husband Miles and I are opposed to this rezoning, and everyone here today has voiced their opinions, and now it's time for the councillors of Neill County to base their final decision on everybody that has showed up here today. I have eight pictures on my phone, and some were from yesterday and some were from today, of the Spy Hill landfill, as well as the Ocatose landfill. And I'm telling you, if I could plug my phone into that slideshow, those sites do not represent what waste management is proposing that it's gonna look like. It does not. And if you don't want it in your backyard, then darn well stand up for us who don't want it in our backyard. Thank you very much.
Is it Landy?
It's Lang.
Oh, is it Lang? Okay, that's not a problem, I just want, I think it's Sawyer, I believe it's Tara, but I'm not sure, it says T Sawyer is the next speaker, if you'd come forward. And Ms. Lang, go ahead.
My name is Jane Lang, we are landowners about five miles south. I'd like to just briefly, in about two minutes, talk about respect. With respect to that, thank you for hosting this and making it a very, very open meeting, both sides, sort of. And also, I would like to respect and thank all the people who previously went with the work, the time, and the intelligence that they've put into their submissions. Direct control is the most undesirable method that you could possibly consider to relinquish all autonomy, all public input forever with no accountability. And please bear with me, I'll be two minutes. I respect that we must be handled, but not someone else's. Keep it in their own backyard. I do not respect that the existing method is archaic. There are many, many other very sustainable environmental issues. And I'll just mention Wataswud because it hasn't been mentioned before. They've signed an agreement with Sustain from Nova Scotia, that's just one. I don't respect that Waste Connections doesn't even consider that. Recycling is one of their core values. Isn't that interesting in a day and time like now? It's not on their big billboard that they greeted with at the open house. I do not respect the clandestine, backroom, confidential meetings over the past months or probably years that have been going on. And then, and then, did we the public get a month's notice? And that's been alluded to already here today, okay? And lastly, I cannot possibly respect the rhetoric, the vague, the pie in the sky, excuse my French, the BS, that has come through with promises, indications, we want to, we will, we would, we intend to. It's conceptual, it's potential. We promise hundreds of thousands of dollars for the community, oh yeah? We promise a new home, oh yeah? Any guarantees here? Is that sustainable? Are you accountable? Do any of you believe all that? Sorry about you? Okay, please, council, consider the due democratic processes and consider your constituency and deny, reject, direct control rezoning. Thank you.
You will be followed by Mr. Dean Penner, so if he would come forward, please. And Ms. Sawyer, the floor is yours.
Thank you, my name's Tara Sawyer, I'm here speaking on behalf of my husband Matt and our family. We did submit a letter. I'm going to butcher my original speaking notes because most of it has been mentioned already, so if I sound fractured, it's because I'm gonna have to pick and choose some. In the economic outlook for agriculture, one of the first points mentioned on the website is looking at how to support agriculture. Redesigning agricultural land for use for a landfill is in direct opposition of that goal. We have to protect the land and the species who make their home there. I have a position where I spend a lot of time doing egg policy work on behalf of farmers across Canada, specifically for the barley and wheat farmers. So I spend a lot of time trying to talk to governments. And I wanna give a shout out to everybody for taking the time to use your voice. It was a mention at the open house that the sum of the land will still be used for agriculture purposes. So I was curious as to who would be seeding that unused land and managing and what would be seeded? What are the reclamation of some of these things? Given that it would be as many years as it would be here, I don't anticipate for reclamation being an issue. In terms of the benefits to local community, maintaining the stretch of road has been mentioned. That's upkeeping a road that is being damaged from the use, so that's not really something that is helping the community. I'm concerned with precedent that would be set allowing this type of facility into our county. This is hardly an endeavour that's going to bring in more housing opportunities to grow our communities. This isn't a bill to make more space for new businesses. It's a garbage pit being plunked in the middle of prime agricultural land. I read an article this morning from Mount Mew. Apparently in Inisvale, there is a company called, and I also don't know it, Varme, that is wanting to build a waste-to-energy facility. One of their major roadblocks, and I read this from the article, is concern on having enough garbage to incinerate. Inisvale produces 3,000 to 5,000 tonnes a year, and the facility needs 100,000 tonnes to be viable. As noted in the article, the waste is burned and turned into electricity, something that has been successful in Norway. Well, this past summer, I was in Switzerland, visiting my family for my dad's 70th birthday, and I saw a similar facility that was used to provide electricity for a few of the neighbouring towns in the Alps, including my family's home. So I saw firsthand how you can manage waste, not in this archaic old fashioned, and actually have a new viable way for energy. Why isn't anyone looking at this type of waste disposal? There's no eyesore, no buildup of refuse with no smell. I walked around, maybe we weren't supposed to, but my cousin said it was okay. There was no smell, and it was clean, and that energy was going straight into their homes. And if Inisvale's already proving such a project, I suggest steering you to that type of initiative. We are looking for new and more environmentally friendly energy sources, that is a great solution. As farmers, we are stewards of the land, tasked with feeding an ever-growing population at a time when food security is a real concern. We have enough challenges with misinformed governments taking away the tools we need to grow more with less. Don't take away the importance of the land we need to be successful in this task. Once it's gone, there's no getting it back. And think about what you want this county to foster and represent for the good of all. There's other ways to bring in revenue without bringing in garbage with an eyesore to the landfill and all the negatives that come with that. I wanna thank you for taking the time, it's not easy to sit there and listen, but it is what your tasks do, and we appreciate it. And I hope you are recognizing the fact that this is a goal.
Mr. Penner, you're the next speaker, and you'll be followed by Sadie Miller, so if Sadie would like to come to the front. And I don't know if the Miller family is interested in accelerating this process or not, but I know there's about three or four of you in a row, so after Mr. Penner, Sadie, you are next. Mr. Penner, go ahead.
Good afternoon, councillors. Tara Sawyer's a bit of a tough act to follow, but I'll do my best. So I just have a couple of quick points. I live southwest of 13025, which the crow flies is about six miles north of the proposed site. And I don't think I'm directly affected, to some degree I'm sure, but I don't think that's the point. I think every landowner, every councillor... I think every landowner, every councillor, has to put their feet in the shoes of the adjacent landowners and move accordingly. My second point, and I don't mean any disrespect whatsoever, I know what you guys do is a tough job, but I think it's a bit of a shame, I hope I'm wrong, I hope it's a bit of a shame that the landowners and constituents in Neill County have to retain a lawyer to represent them against people that are supposed to be representing them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Penner. Ms. Sawyer, you're next, and then you'll be followed by Carly Miller, so Carly, if you would come to the front, please.
Good evening, council. I'm Sadie Miller. I live on Township Road 291-1A, half a mile away from the proposed landfill site. And I'm one of the future farmers and ranchers of Neill County. I have not written a letter, but I am strongly opposed to the redesignation of the land. We have heard all the concerns of the neighbors surrounding the proposed site, so I'll keep this short. When I first heard of the proposed landfill, I told my parents that if it goes through, I'd like to move far away so that when I wake up in the morning, I'm not startled by the sight of 60 meters of garbage taking over my home. I am in complete awe that anyone in their mind would like, would want a landfill half a mile from anybody's house, let alone a family of five with animals living on the land. Over 2 million pounds of garbage coming in per day is equivalent to, in terms, that make more sense to me, 1,350 head of finished beef cattle. In comparison, the garbage will be laid till raw on the land, whereas that many animals could be used to feed over 12,500 people a year and would be fed by the land that is being used by landfill. As a 17-year-old growing up, it's sad to see that this world that we live in is burying garbage because it's cheaper rather than disposing of it in a better manner. I strongly hope that you, the council, will think of the effect this could have on the future farmers and ranchers of Neill County and the families affected by this landfill. Thank you.
Thank you, Sadie. Very welcome to the podium. Carly Miller's next, followed by Ed Miller, so Ed, if you would come to the front, please. And Carly, the floor is yours.
Good afternoon. My name is Carly Miller, and I am a third-generation farmer. I was born and raised within walking distance of this proposed landfill. I am a half a mile north, and I strongly oppose this proposition. As the future of our community, I will see the results of this landfill and the negative impacts that come along with it for the entirety of my lifespan. Our county is something I am proud to be part of, but bringing on a project as ugly as this one makes me rethink that. This project has only downsides for the residents of our community. Landfills bring only negative impacts. The seagulls that will follow the trash from cow poop all carry diseases that are now transmittable to both cattle and people alike, that will become a growing health risk to those surrounding the landfill. Our valued gravel roads, roads that I once felt safe learning how to drive on, will have drastically increased traffic flow, making it near impossible for new drivers who live on these roads to have a safe environment to learn in. The garbage that will be in this landfill will blow into every property and field within the county, hurting crops and creating a nuisance for not only those who live near the site, but everyone in the community. The most concerning for myself and for my family is the question of not if, but when the liners leak and leakage from this landfill get into our water system, the water system that provides life to our county, our county residents, and livestock. When this happens, it will ruin our business and way of life. I would like to ask the council to please listen to the concerns of the community that they are supposed to be representing, and please think long and hard about this and what it will do to not only my family, but to many. And to think of the future generations and what issues will surely arise before letting this proposition go any farther than coffee shop gossip. Our county is a beautiful place to be and to live. Do not let a landfill ruin our community. Do not let it ruin our livelihoods. And finally, do not let this ruin the lives of many generations to come that will feel the offense of an event that has your signature attached to it.
Thank you, everyone. I think Mr. Ed Miller has temporarily left the room, so I'm going to move in the speakers' list to Amanda Miller as the next person who wishes to speak. And following her, I'm going to ask Mr. Steve LaRocque to come forward, and so he's available to speak after Amanda is finished. Amanda, the floor is yours.
Good afternoon. I will be much shorter. Everyone has listed many of my concerns, but I just, a few comments regarding things that I have heard today. Councillor Cunningham asked about the traffic, and Lyle and I had met with Dan Rochette from WCC, and he stated that the loads would not be replacing the Coronation traffic. In fact, the Chaparral landfill will be the one closing down, so I would just like it noted that the traffic will actually increase as the trucks coming to the site will be as well as the trucks that are already going to Coronation. And the other thing I'd like to add is councillor Penner's question about the soil, contaminated soil. Their response was that the intent is to use the soil at the site to cap itself, but a Class II landfill can accept contaminated soil for daily burying. So if this landfill could accept that soil, even if it is not used to cap the stuff. Thank you. I am strongly opposed to this also. I'm sure you got that. Thank you.
Thank you. I have to say one thing I have recognized, Ruth, today is the passion that's involved in the presentations out here. Mr. LaRocque is our next speaker, and he is going to be followed by Mr. Steve Vogt. And so, Mr. LaRocque, the floor is yours.
Thank you, councillor. Councillors, thank you for listening to us all today. I have written a letter in opposition to the location. Can't say I've got my hand wrapped around all the risks involved and whether or not I'd be opposed to a landfill in Neill County, like we am, but I'd like to learn more. But in this case, I just want, a lot of what's been touched on today I'm not going to repeat, so there's just one thing that we kind of glazed over, and that was the ESA. So this land contains an environmentally significant area, and it was classified on the low end, it's a level four, I understand. But it didn't meet four of the 12 criteria, some being, you know, steep banks that are irritable and it's a historically significant area. But there was one list on that criteria that was really significant and passed over, and that was that ESA met four of the 12 criteria. And number two was, this area is vital, is a vital environmental, ecological, and hydrological function. It contains vital environmental, ecological, and hydrological functions. So it is an environmentally significant area, right, adjacent to the landfill. And if we're going to place it anywhere, replacing it upwind from Akuli that feeds into Neill's Creek. So not only is it an environmentally sensitive area, it's an area where if you're going to put something, you're going to put a landfill on the, is it on the Windward side? So on the west side of an environmentally sensitive area that flows into Neill's Creek. Of all the areas you could put it, I'm not suggesting on the east side, but the east side would even be better than the west side. The west side, the wind blows from the west, we know. We just had three days of north winds that are not uncommon. The westerlies are normal. So we're giving it every opportunity to load that watershed with debris, with whether it's garbage, whether it's contamination or contaminated soil. Every time you use clay, it wets up, turns into very, very small particles, and gets blown into the creek, let's say, gets blown into the watershed. So that's all I'm going to address today, is just that if we go to the trouble of producing these reports that show us where the environmentally sensitive areas are, how can we just, in this case, just ignore them? And just say, hey, let's put a landfill on the west side of a watershed that feeds into Neill Creek a mile and a half away? I trust you'll make the right decision, we'll leave it in your hands, but thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Vogt. Are you here in the room? Steve Vogt? Ed Miller, have you come back in the room? So before I do anything else, I need to ask if there is anyone else in the room whose name is not on the wishing to speak in opposition list, who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposal? And if you wish to do that, would you please come forward to the front of the room, please? And once you arrive here, what I need you to do is to speak your name clearly and state where you live, and we will give you the same five minutes we have given to somebody else. So if you want to go ahead, this is the last opportunity I'm providing for those who wish to speak in opposition. So please state your name and where you live, and then if you would please go ahead. The floor is yours.
Thank you. My name's Linda Stephens, 821 Clark Street in Acme. I support a lot of the comments that people have made. It's outrageous, how can we do this to our ranchers? How can you do this to our families, to our watersheds? One of the things coming from Acme, my husband doesn't know a whole lot, but he stumbled across word of this dump and shared it with me. There's an awful lot in Acme who just like, I can't believe the people who are two miles away weren't spoken to. I can understand, okay, fine, maybe, you know, we're a little bit further away, but we sure didn't know about it. I've taken the day off work to be here on behalf of about 100 people who didn't know about it. And they're like, I would go, but I can't get off work to come here. So I'm a commercial and residential and real estate agent by trade, and I have a duty in my line of business of disclosure. And I think there's a lot of people who feel there's a lot of bad optics here and a lot of concerns about how long it took to produce this report, produce all this stuff, how long this has been going on for. I learned about this about four days ago. To make that kind of decision that's going to impact lives for generations, it's heartbreaking, quite frankly. And I'm really grateful for the young kids who spoke up. They have a lot of courage to come up here and say, I'm a future rancher. I go to 4H, I raise steers. Who's going to compensate them once their lands are contaminated? I heard there's a small chance, a maybe, that some of the watersheds might be impacted. Well, what about once they are, and then we're in a position of reaction? And the cost of that? And I can tell you from commercial development, for example, not that it's the landfill, but a fuel station, someone buys that land and there's a plume that has happened to plume to their residential lot across the street, and they go to sell, they're responsible for that cleanup, and I can tell you it's millions and millions of dollars. I can't even imagine on the scale of hundreds and hundreds of acres of a landfill, once that gets into our watershed. Once it's in there, we can't take it out. And who's going to compensate people when their cattle start dying, when their kids have cancer, when the young ranchers who are now moms and have babies, and four months later they're diagnosed with cancer? Who's going to replace their kids? This is a bigger picture. This is not just a today decision. This is a multi-generation, this is our future decision. And no disrespect to waste management. Honestly, you have commercial operations that you're looking to produce and that you're looking to develop. Alberta is vast, and I can tell you, there's areas where for hockey, we've driven for hours and hours and not seen a soul or an animal. There's better locations for this. This is a not, not in our backyard issue. This is a, hey, we're directly impacted issue, and there are better locations to consider where there's not one, 10, 15 viable small communities of people who matter. We're coming here today to say, we matter. Our kids matter. The environment matters. And if we're going to consider a proposal like this for your development, that's fine, but there's better locations for it. There's better locations where we're not going to impact watersheds and sensitive lands that are going to impact for generations that we're not going to be able to undo. And to ask individual citizens that their only recourse, once these things happen in their, in their watersheds and their soil and in their lands and impacting their livelihoods. You know, I don't ranch, I'm just a single homeowner, but I can go to the market and buy the vegetables and order the beef and buy my eggs from these farms, and if it's contaminated, it's a done deal. Please don't make it a done deal for Neill County, just like I have a duty to any clients I represent and have a duty of disclosure and fiduciary representation. As said before, you have a fiduciary duty to the residents of Neill County and all of the communities that it impacts. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Linda Stephens. I see another individual who wishes to speak, so if you'd come to, like, introduce yourself and then go ahead. Please let us know where you live and, you know, in relation to the project, just the floor is yours, I guess.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name's Brendan Ramsey. My wife and children, we live on Radron 251 and 292. So we're, we're just straight west essentially of what's going on here. I've taken the time off work to come down here to stand in opposition with my fellow neighbors here. That involved a eight-hour drive to get home, so I'm missing three days' work to be here to stand in support. This is important. My previous career was in environmental sciences. I worked on many sites that included landfills. The non-answer to the lifespan of the liners, I definitely noticed that. I heard a lot of verbiage head corporate talk designed to sound like an answer that isn't. I have seen sites that within a year, clay liners and other liners, such as the plastics that they use, have broken down. The containment is temporary. Environmental sciences is a multi-billion dollar company, not just within what I'm talking about. It draws a lot of economy. You can see waste companies partnering with environmental companies. It's partnership. They give each other's business. What I have seen from working in that industry, that the means of dealing with these contamination plumes, and I've seen results from geophysical analysis using resistivity, I've seen it in soil sampling, I've seen it in water monitoring. It was mentioned about having water wells positioned around the perimeter. And there's always talk about monitoring, 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 monitoring. Continued monitoring, long-term monitoring. This is what happens on these sites when there is breach in containment with leaching, is that they monitor it. They monitor it till such time that another company takes over the property. Then they continue to monitor it. The original company's responsibility is handed off, who then hands it off to another company and another company. Environmental monitoring is a big business. Dealing with the reclamation of the contamination, and I'm not talking about surface reclamation, I'm talking about deep groundwater and soil contamination is an expense. And that's come from somebody who spent a decade working in that industry. So I stand here in support with all of my neighbors in opposition to this. I would ask you as councillors who represent us, as the taxpayers, as the residents of this county, please represent us. Please see the support that all of us have here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, everybody. I'm going to ask one more time whether Mr. Miller, Ed Miller, has returned to the room or whether Mr. Vogt is in the room, as they both signed on the speakers' list. So I'm asking one last time. I'm not seeing them responding.
I can tell that we're going to.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. So I failed earlier in my duties to provide opportunity for those who were in support of the proposal. After the three who signed up, I failed to give opportunity for anyone else in the room who was in support to speak. And so at this point in time, I would like to give that opportunity. If there was anyone in the room who felt that they would like to speak in support, who were not on the speakers' list, then this is your opportunity. And again, I'm not seeing anyone. I've also heard that there's a wish... I've also heard that there's a wish that an individual, Mr. Hammersham, Homersham, who spoke earlier, had group presentation of 10 minutes, that he be allowed to come back. The process that we're in is mandated and pretty much legislated, and if I give Mr. Homersham opportunity to return to speak outside of the mandated process, then that leaves this whole process open to appeal on the proponent's side. So because of that potential risk that exists, I am not going to give opportunity for Mr. Homersham to come back and provide additional material. He had the 10 minutes that he was given, and so I am going to exercise the chairman's prerogative, which is to say, I am not going to allow that because it does put this whole process at risk, and I'm not going to do that. So I'm sorry, but that's where I am sitting at this point. So the next step in the whole process that we're at is, there's an opportunity here for the applicant or the proponent to offer rebuttal to the information that has been presented here today. I will remind the applicant that you have 10 minutes maximum for your presentation in rebuttal. So if you wish to come forward to do that, this is your opportunity to do that now. And I am very cognizant of time as well. So if the applicant wishes to come forward to offer rebuttal, then I am inviting you So when you're ready, there you go.
Which is like a one-minute confirm. We'll proceed. So if you're ready, please go ahead. Thank you for the opportunity. There was a lot of information obviously provided today, so what I want to do is just really highlight some of the items that is a board dialing. We do operate where the farming community successfully operates beside us and with us as a track. It's something that we do, and we do this successfully in this province in coordination, where our neighbors do thrive and their operations thrive, and they do work with us. We do not affect water wells adjacent to the coordination section. That is, we have reports, those are publicly available information, so that suggests and another, that we don't, we absolutely do not affect those water wells. Royalty is a negotiation to be in benefit, to the benefit of the community. The example that was given about P33 regional waste management, a million dollars that has been contributed over many years, was only a small portion of that enhancement framework, but it was a directly, a discussion and an example of what we can do. In this community, there is no predetermined idea of what those royalty dollars are going to be. We wanted to offer up some examples to give people an understanding that those dollars have contributed to 4H, to Childcare Society, to many events, to a lot of different aspects and contributions within the community that made a difference. That is what we would discuss and lay the point, so it's not a predetermined idea what that benefit would do this community. Property value protection is to protect the market value of a property at whatever time the landlord wants to sell. So the market value does change as the years go. So it's not established at market value today and never, it's at whatever time that person wants to sell their property, that the market value of that property is protected. We are replacing our Chaparral society, of which the current volume of that site is going to coordination. So as this project does get developed, that volume that is on Highway 21 will come back from coordination to this site. The large size of the property, the 540 meters, does allow us to operate our smaller footprint and does allow us to manage the aspects of our operation on the site. We do manage the litter, the birds, the order. These are factors in our operation, in our operational practices, how we do our business, how we, how we do our operations. We're very proud of that, and it attracts, it shows them. Comparing us to other facilities that are not brought by us is not fair comparison. We very much respect the county process, and that's why we're here. We very much respect the county's recommendations on using the direct control, which it does, what we believe, allow the county to have quite a bit of control by definition of direct I'm hoping I captured a lot of the aspects that were highlighted today. I believe with the what we heard report, with our submission, with our presentation today, it does allow the county to have a full understanding of how we operate, how we engage this community, how we are in the first steps of engagement. And yes, we heard a lot of transparency and we show a lot of the detail because a lot of the detail is to come. We are in the first stage. This is about zoning, but the detailed effort that we have to make is significant, as appropriately so. We cannot develop any site, we cannot develop a landfill, we cannot develop anything if we do not follow all the conditions laid out in the application of the CLE, in your presentation today. All of those requirements must be met, or we are proved to do anything to conform. In order to satisfy all of those, we need the land rezoned. So if we can get the rezoning, we can absolutely go through the process and satisfy every one of those items. Every one of those items is also has a public process. This public process will continue on lots of times, many times over. We will engage, and we'll show you the detail. We'll show you exactly what we need to do. But even in our best efforts of trying to communicate, as you can see, sometimes it's a lot of information we don't want to get quite right. I think when we see the, again, 800-acre landfill, we're going to be developing some of that rhetoric, we are wanting to show you the facts of exactly what we need to do, the pathway we need to take, and exactly what we are responsible to do. We take it seriously, as it needs to be, serious, as I mentioned before, this is a serious project, meant to be in this county. We need to take this community seriously by giving them the detail they deserve, and we will do that.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate your comments in rebuttal. I also want to make note for the record anyway, that we had an individual sign up to speak in opposition of Mr. Robert Taylor. He approached me earlier in the meeting and requested that his name be removed from the list, and so that's why, if you look at the speakers list, there was a name for Mr. Robert Taylor, and he actually asked for that to be removed. So just for the record, just so everyone's aware, that's where we're at. So the next step of this whole process is I need to ask council if they have any further questions or clarification that they need from either the applicant or from administration prior to us moving forward in the process. So the question is, I guess, to council, is there anything that you need either the applicant or the administration to address in this process? Okay, I'm not seeing any of that. And so the next question I need to ask is, as council, are you satisfied with the amount of information that you have heard here today before I entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing? So, okay, thank you. The other thing I would like to remind everyone is that once this public hearing is adjourned, that we as members of council will no longer be receiving information on this matter until after we have made our decision. So we will not be soliciting any further input from the applicant or from you as residents in Neale County. The way this process works is when the public hearing closes, all opportunity to provide information to us as counselors to assist us in our decision-making process, if that ends until we will meet as council and we will make a decision related to the request for redesignation. So I just needed you to know that, so that you're aware of that. Mrs. Lang? I will, yes, I can tell you that. So the decision that, or the process that council's going to go through is we will not be considering this material today in terms of making a decision about the redesignation. In order to absorb, maybe that's not to write, but in order for us to process the information that's been provided to us today, we are going to take some time. So the redesignation will be coming back to council at our first council meeting in May, which is going to be held on May the 14th. So just for your information, there will be, council itself is not going to consider the redesignations today. We need to process the information that has been provided. Question?
Can I tell you what else you may want to add?
No, I'm sorry, we can't take any more input. The timeline or timeframe for that was closed earlier. I can answer a question regarding process, but I won't take any further input on Mr. Penner.
Will we know who voted for and against?
I can probably guarantee you that this will be a recorded vote. I don't think there's counselors that are sitting at this table will want and will request a recorded vote.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
If property protection, if you sell, how would you go over any damages for increasing your value if you're not selling?
I'm sorry, I can't entertain that question at this point in time. The only thing I can entertain is a question related to process in terms of the decision. That is a question that you would want to take up with the applicant if you want to move forward with that question. Okay, so at this point in time, I would declare that this public hearing is closed, and I'm going to ask for a motion from the counselors to go back into the regular council meeting. Okay, Counselor Boak made the motion that we go back into the regular council meeting. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously, so I now declare the public hearing is closed. Council is in recess until, I'm going to say, 3:15. That's probably pushing it.